Okay, well Paula might be running late, I don't know. Hopefully she'll, she'll be here soon. Let's, uh... Yeah, yeah, I came around on 152. But, um, okay, let's, um... Why don't we call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight, everyone. The first thing that we will do is take public comment. If anyone has something that they would like to discuss with us that's not on the agenda. If, if it's a matter that's already on the agenda, of course, you don't have the agendas, do you? Okay, all right. So, but does anyone have any public comment at this time?
The San Benito County Pacheco Stormwater District welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the committee via Zoom, please phone or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the, the district as a whole through the trustee. If a participant via Zoom, select Participant tab, click the Raise Hand icon. If you're using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you're participating in person at the chambers, please come, complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chamber. In chambers, please approach the podium and state your name and the county in which you reside for the record. You have three minutes. Via Zoom, if you have been unmuted, please state your name and the county in which you reside for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So do we have any public comment at this time? Any public comment via Zoom? Okay, doesn't sound like it. Well, you, we do, okay.
Anthony Batello, you've been muted. Anthony, you can unmute yourself now.
I'm sorry, sorry about that. Anthony Batello, Samuel County. I didn't want to fight the traffic at Union and 156, get across there at this time of night, so on Zoom. Anyhow, had an offer to RMaid to take a tour of the north side of that levee along our property and the breach that occurred, I guess, in January. And I assume you still have my number. And anytime you're available, I'm more than happy and available to take you out there to show you the breach and the damage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And I believe that we can vote on these as a group, is that right?
That's correct. You should ask for public comment on the consent, on any items on the consent agenda.
Is there any public comment on the consent agenda items?
There is no public comment.
All right, then. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? And those are the approval of the minutes from the May 22 meeting and the acknowledgement of certificate of posting of agenda. Would you, would you like to move to approve the consent agenda items?
Yes, we approve.
So, so you are making a motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I will second the motion. And all in favor? Aye? So, are, um, aye, did, aye, okay. All right, all those opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is approved. We will now move on to the regular agenda. And the first item is an update regarding the status of the FEMA application for the public, emergency public assistance to repair the levee breaks. And we have Steve Loop from the staff.
All right, good evening, trustees. For item 2.1, provide the status for the request for emergency public assistance. So, um, the water district has been assigned a project manager by FEMA, which is another good step forward. That person's name is Lee Marison. And we will be meeting this week with Lee, I believe, on Friday at 1:00 PM. It's either going to be Thursday at 4:00 PM or Friday at 1:00 PM, depending on some availability of folks in this room. But, um, and at that meeting, we'll go through the list of requested items for reimbursement from FEMA. And the two, the way that FEMA and our team here in this room have decided to break up the reimbursement requests. We're going to be requesting reimbursement for the debris per the first set of storms because all the debris piles were essentially in place during the first set of storms. And that event is called 4683, in the eyes of the state and FEMA. And then for the levee breach, because it actually was made worse after the second set of storms, that will be requested for reimbursement and funding on the second set of storms, which is event 4699. So on Friday, we'll be discussing the debris removal request and start processing that. And then probably in a month or so, we'll be requesting the funding for the levee break. And on that note, regarding public comment from Mr. Batello, I have scheduled a site visit with the Department of Water Resources levee repair team on July 6th. So somewhere around that time, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Batello to visit his site, as well as the other, at least two other locations where we think there's a breach. So that's the status from FEMA. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So are there any questions for, um, for staff on this? So that debris pile there by the bridge. So what is the status of that now? Because I know that, well, I guess that isn't, oh, I, that's the next, that's the next item. Sorry, I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, um, uh, let's see. So there, it doesn't appear that there are any questions for you about this item. Should I take public comment on this item now? Or see if there's any public comment?
Yes, each item, you should ask if there's public comment.
All right, is there any public comment on this item 2.1? And this has to do with the FEMA application to repair the levee breaks.
There is one public comment via Zoom. Anthony, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you, Steve, for that. And I'll be available to whatever assistance I can provide. Question I have is once you get the funding, actually two questions. Is, as far as the quotes for the, to get the funding, you have to have some idea of the funds that are needed for debris removal, as well as the levee breaches? How did you arrive at those assessments for the cost of doing that work? And the second part of that question is, once you get the funding, how long will it take to engage the work and complete it? Thank you.
Okay, and if I may, address the public comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, we have taken a recent drone video and we can count, I've counted five pretty good sized piles. They're not as large as the debris pile that's drifted near the Lovers Lane Bridge. But we had a meeting with FEMA for this project about three weeks ago, I believe. And we gave them the dimensions of the debris piles. And actually walked and visually assessed a couple of the debris piles, the two larger ones. And so, long story short, they, we all guessed it'd be about 100,000 per debris pile. And so we'll find out a timeline, hopefully, on this Friday, of when the funding could be approved, to answer the question on. And once we actually are fairly certain to receive some funds, then we can talk about how we can proceed because I don't know if they, you know, they... Somehow, let's just say we need half a million dollars. I, my guess is we're going to have to receive some assurance from FEMA that they'll actually provide the funding. And then I'll schedule it the minute that we receive that assurance. But again, I won't know that timeline until at least this Friday, when we meet with, um, with Lee. And then I think the, in my humble opinion, the, the difficult part is going to be what, how do we dispose of five very large piles of damp debris? At least it's damp on the bottom, from what I can see. So we threw that question out to FEMA and the state during our last meeting. And so we're going to revisit that question of, do we chip it? Do we compost it? How do we get it offsite? And, um, and go from there, so.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item, agenda item 2.1? You do not need a card, but you do need to approach the mic so that we can have your comment on the record.
The meeting is being recorded. And so people who are not on the microphone, their voices, while they may be loud, are not picked up for the recording.
Yeah, I'm loud. My question was for Mr. Loop, anyway. Is, is it possible that the county could do this work and then get the reimbursement from the government? Or whoever, like FEMA, whoever pays you guys? Because that, you know, I'm watching the weather and El Nino is here. We're feeling the effects in the eastern part of the country. And they tell us we're going to rain in September. So if that's the case, are we going to build an ark? Or are we going to have that mess cleaned up? And then we'll ask them to reimburse us? We do it first, if the county's got the money? No dinero? You can, you can tell me that, yeah.
Are you finished with your comment?
I'm finished, yes.
Okay, we have another comment, and then, and then you can address both of them.
Hello, my name is Lucinda Florrick. I'm from San Benito County, Lovers Lane Storm District area. I think I asked this last time, the, not the previous month, but the month before, that I'd kind of like to have a little visibility of these five piles that you're talking about. And then maybe provide a map of where these are located. So that way we can have a little bit more visibility of what we're looking at and where our funds are going. And then we can all, as an owners and property owners and people that live there, can actually see when the, that, those projects have been completed, too. Just for, just for visibility and accountability, I think, for everybody. You know, where funds are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
There are no further public comments.
So may I address the public questions?
Please.
All right. So for the first question regarding funding, the county does have some emergency funds available. What we're doing right now, we're, we're trying to compensate the contractors that have been performing repair work throughout the county over the past few months, and it's still actually ongoing a bit, believe it or not. And so we're allocating some funding towards that. And I will reach out to our CAO and our auditing folks and see if there's additional emergency funding that could be made available for that activity. And I think it's, it's a worthwhile discussion. So, but I don't know the answer if, if the county's going to be able to, quote unquote, you know, front the money or loan the district the money. And then regarding the piles, yeah. So I've been watching the, the drone videos. And what I'll do is after I finish, now that I know kind of where the piles are from the videos, and I've seen two, they're pretty large, actually. But the other three ones, I'll, I'll have to walk it and map. And maybe I'll walk it before the 6th and take Mr. Batello up on his offer sooner rather than later and try to get some of those, the smaller ones mapped out in addition to the two large ones. And then we can all see, you know, what we're talking about. And that will, I like visuals, too, so it's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will move on now to item 2.2, which is an update on debris removal. And so Steve is back at the podium. And I think you know which pile I'm, I, I meant there, right?
Yeah, there's a real large one by the, the Lovers Lane Bridge, just upstream. And it's gradually floating closer and closer to the bridge. And then there's also a real large pile at the main levee breach, which is actually near San Felipe, on that property corner, right near that bridge. It's a few hundred feet down. And it, it's pretty apparent that's what caused the blockage. And then that ended up with, resulting in the breach onto, you know, the fields and then going down towards Lovers Lane. So those are the two large ones. From what I can tell from the video, there's, there are three smaller ones, at least. And in addition to that, per a good suggestion from some of the public in the audience here, I reached out to California Conservation Corps, Janet. I want to try to pronounce her last name, it's tricky, it starts with a W. But we've been placed on their July queue to reserve a team. It sounds like there's about 40-ish folks that might be able to help come. And hopefully in July, which is coming just around the corner, we'll have some good news from FEMA, the state, about funding. Because I, I think the breach, it, it, they'll be able to help out with that, if not the debris pile. I think the debris piles might be more efficiently addressed with contractors, but we'll see. Well, I'll talk to Janet and see what she's been working on. I guess her teams have been working on these type of activities and some firefighting activities. So, long story short, we're in the queue. It sounds like towards the end of July, that she's reserved a team of California Conservation Corps. And I think she said they bill about 45,000 or 50,000 dollars a week, which is actually pretty reasonable. So, um, so that is the status on the debris removal.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You said it's a team, probably the 40 to 45 guys. Those guys, they working in a week. How much debris they can clean in one week? And how long they take to clean the core area?
Very good question. I think between now and maybe mid-July, because it sounds like they won't be ready till the end of July. I'll, I'll reach out to Janet again and kind of assess what they've done in the past and how she thinks they can most efficiently help us. I, I mean, these, these piles are pretty large. So they might, believe it or not, when I meet with the Department of Water Resources on July 6th, they might actually have some ideas about how we can use a conservation corps in the, at least on the smaller breaches. Because there's breaches on the north side, probably in two locations. On one near the Lovers Lane Bridge and one near the San Felipe Bridge, there's smaller breaches. So the corps might help with that. And if, if Janet says the corps has been helping with large debris pile removal activities, that's great. So I think I just need to assess what they're experienced with and, and ask them. Otherwise, we'll just have a contractor come out, like a large contractor with a big excavator. And again, the trick is, you know, what do we do with the debris? I think we'll be able to get the majority of it out of the creek, but we just have to find a way to either dispose of it onsite or take it to our landfill. And so, I don't know if that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, he's fine.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Is there any public comment on this agenda item?
There is no public comment.
All right. Oh, is it?
I'm sorry, I'd like to...
Please come on up.
I just want to, um... Hello, my name is Lucinda Florrick again. This is for question to Mr. Loops here. On the follow-up on that, since it's in end of July, are we going to be? It looks like you said you were going to be talking to, to what was her name again?
Janet.
To Janet, right? So, um, do we already have, like, a plan to have them work? And for how long? Or is it just kind of like, we're going to evaluate at the end of July? You know? So that would be my, like, my follow-up question on that. Because, you know, we don't want to... Because, you know, we don't want to, it seems like it's been a couple of months since we were promised that that debris on the bridge was going to be cleared. And because I missed last, I wasn't here last month. But, you know, so it's been a couple of months. And so it's still there. And so it just seems like it would be kind of late if we wait until July 30th to find out if we're not going to use them. You know, so a follow-up question would be that, I mean, maybe there should be a kind of a conversation with Janet to see if they can allocate the, if you agree that they're going to be able to do the job successfully, or if we need somebody to go in and contract it. So I would like to see it done by, we're going to do it on the end of July instead of saying we're going to wait until July to find an answer. You know? So that's my follow-up to you. Thanks.
So can I address a question?
Please.
Great. So if I gave the impression that debris was going to be cleaned up a couple of months ago, then I think I gave the wrong impression because first we need to be allocated some funding and then we can allocate the resources to clean it up. However, as mentioned previously, I'll reach out to my supervisors, I'll say, and see if we can allocate some county funding sooner rather than later. Because right now, there is no funding to do the cleanup. That's the problem, whether it's county, non-county, water district. So that's number one. Number two, yeah, so Janet, we spoke briefly, she emailed back. And so we have a crew in the queue for the last few weeks of July. And so I, believe me, she and I both will be talking before then to see what that means. And again, I want to assess, are they familiar with debris removals? Or she had mentioned, you know, they're great at doing sandbags and moving, you know, small earth, doing small earthwork activities. So that's what we talked about on the phone a couple of weeks ago, or actually it was about three weeks ago, when she first said she'll reserve a crew for us for a few weeks at the end of the month. So we'll definitely have those conversations. Hopefully after Friday, I'll have a little better impression of when we can expect some funding from FEMA or the state or some kind of at least preliminary approval. They have a process where they'll, you know, preliminarily approve an activity. And they won't actually give you the funding, but what we do is we ask to be, you know, allocated funding for the activity. And then again, the county would have to, or the water district would have to come up with the funding to pay a contractor or even pay the corps. And then FEMA would reimburse us. And if we were allocated ahead of time that funding, I think the county would be a lot more amenable to find some money in the county coffers to help the activity happen, as you said, right? So that's pretty much the status of where we're at on the debris removal.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item?
There are no other public comments.
All right, then we will move on to 2.3. And this is an update on the California Special District Association membership. And I don't know, Joel, do you have a report on this? Or I can just talk about what I found out?
Yes, if you would, please. I don't have a report. I thought you were handling it.
Yeah, no, no, I can't. There's not a great deal to report, but I'm happy to report, well, first of all, let's review for a minute what the Special District Association, California Special District Association. It is an association of special districts, right? Like water districts. So our Pacheco Stormwater District is what is called a special district. And there are associations for pretty much everything, including special districts. So we discussed, we've been discussing joining the, this association. And one of the benefits of membership is that we would have access to insurance that they sell for districts such as ours, liability insurance, for instance. So we, I submitted an application and because they had, they had a special sort of deal, I guess you could say, which is pay what you can, I think is what they're calling it. And because we're so small and we don't have really any revenue to speak of, they, basically they allowed us to join with no membership fee, at least for this year. And then moving forward, I believe the membership fee is based on our revenue. And again, since we don't have any revenue really, then it won't be very much even moving forward. But we are now members of the California Special District Association. And that allows us to access their website and they have various different resources for us. I spoke with one of their representatives a couple of weeks ago about this. And in addition to the insurance, I told him that I would be interested in finding out if there are any other similar districts similar to ours, small water districts, right? That we might be able to connect with to see how they do things. And he said he would look, he would research that. I haven't heard back from him about that. So the, our district now is a member. I also did ask for a quote on insurance. And they can't give me a formal quote until we submit an application and it goes through underwriting. So I have not yet submitted the application, but they did tell me that their least expensive policy is about $3,000 a year, 3,000 to 3,500. Now, one thing that they did mention is that they only sell a package of insurance that includes not only liability and errors and omissions that would protect the trustees, but also workers' comp and automobile liability, which we don't really need at this point because we don't own any autos and we don't have any employees. So she did, the representative there, did suggest to me that we might consider looking for insurance elsewhere. She said there are some small districts that are members of the CSDA that do not get insurance from them, that they just go to a local broker to see if they can get just the liability and the errors and omissions and that it might be a little bit cheaper. So I thought before I submit the application, I thought it would be good to have a conversation about this, to see if that, if we would prefer to do that, as it might be a little bit less expensive. I mean, we could at least, I guess, get a quote. So do you have any comments about that? Or trustee Alfaro, do you have any suggestions?
Okay, the, is like insurance for each family or for the whole area?
Well, the insurance is just for us as trustees of the district. So it's not insurance, it's not flood insurance or anything like that for the homeowners. The insurance would cover us as trustees as we're doing the job of the Pacheco Stormwater District. So if we incurred any liability based on, you know, if we, if we had, I don't know, well, I mean, we're going to be hiring contractors to do the repairs and they would have their own insurance. But if there were any decisions that we made that someone objected to and then was damaged by, for instance, then this insurance would protect us as a group based on the decisions that we make. Now, I'll see if Joel can verify my explanation and perhaps offer more input on that.
No, your explanation, I think generally speaking, is appropriate. I don't know what general insurance brokers might handle anything along those lines. And I don't have any recommendations of who you might contact about that.
Well, we could, I mean, we could, we could contact a local broker to see who sells that kind of insurance. It may be as a government entity or quasi-government entity, I guess. We may be in a special category that, that I don't know if it would be easy to buy just insurance on the general market. I have no idea. Do you have any recommendation about whether it would be preferable for the district to purchase the entire package?
Well, it's really, you know, if you have insurance that you're not, you don't need or don't use, it really depends on, you know, what the alternatives are. If it's still less expensive, even if you're getting coverage for things you don't need, then that's, you know, better to have more than not enough or more expensive. But that's just common sense advice in that regard. Generally speaking, public entities like counties and cities have self-insurance pools that they participate in. The Risk Management Authority for the special districts is an example of that kind of pooled liability. So I suspect that that may be the most appropriate vehicle for this.
Thank you. Is there any comment, public comment on this agenda item?
There is no public comment.
All right, well, then I guess we just need to decide, and it's just you and me, trustee Alfaro. So the question is, should I submit an application for this insurance through the California Special District Association? Or should I see if we can get a quote that for insurance? Since, since the California Special District Association insurance would include coverage that we don't need, should we investigate whether we can buy a separate policy from a local broker?
Probably we have to investigate it from a local broker.
Okay, all right, okay. So then do we...
If you're just going to get a quote from the Risk Management Authority, you would bring it back to the, to the district at a future meeting to accept that or to report on what alternatives you thought about.
Okay, I can, I can do that. All right. And I think we've already voted on getting a quote from the Risk, the Special District Risk Management Authority, right? So do I need any other authorization to get quotes from local brokers?
Other than a consensus of those present, because you're not actually making a commitment, you're just getting information.
Okay, well, I think there's a consensus. So I will go ahead and do both. I will submit an application to the, the Special District Risk Management Authority. And then I will also make a few phone calls and see what else is out there. All right, then I think we can move on. The next item is 2.4. And this involves reviewing and approving the professional services agreement between the Pacheco Stormwater District and the county of San Benito. And so Joel, do you have a presentation on this item?
Well, I provided as part of the agenda package, a draft of this. I had an initial draft and then trustee Schroeder had some comments on it. So I revised the draft and that's the version that, that I've most recently sent that was attached to the agenda item. The purpose of this agreement is to actually get credit for the value of the work that's being provided by county staff to possibly use as the, as part of the matching fund requirement for local funding. The county has so far authorized staff to provide the support for the district to pursue the FEMA application and do all the work that Steve and Madison and Ariel and Victor and myself are doing. It's just a question of accounting for that. And so that there's a dollar figure that the county can then say, yeah, we agree that that's, we're going to provide that to the district as part of the local match requirement. And so it's really providing that, an understanding that supports that in writing and then getting to the point where, where that local match is determined and then the board of supervisors would, would have to make a decision to, that they're going to provide that to, to the district.
Okay, so, so, right. So basically to summarize, the county has been providing a number of services to the district. And they've been, and the county's been doing so without a formal agreement up until this point.
Correct.
And so this agreement that you drafted would formalize that arrangement. And it would go into effect when signed, I guess, presumably end of June or July and last for one year. And part of the rationale for, for putting this together is that if we have a formal agreement, we can use the, the value of the services provided by the county to show the federal government that the district is indeed incurring part of the cost itself, right? Because the FEMA requires us to, to shoulder, let's say, 6%, right? I think it was 6%. And so the idea is that, that if we can show them that we've incurred these costs, that that, we could use that to say, see, we've, we've incurred our 6%, right? Am I, am I summarizing this correctly?
Just to clarify that a bit, that essentially have an agreement that, that we're going to account for this at the fully burdened rate of all the staff that are doing the work. And so that amounts to whatever sum of money it is, you know, people keep their time cards and will put down their time for working on Stormwater District work. What the federal and state governments require is that the local match not come from federal funding. So it can come from the county committing to pay staff out of general fund revenues and that's not federal funds and use that as part of the local match.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So...
It's not, it's not coming out of, not necessarily coming out of funds for the district since the district really doesn't have any significant amount of funds, so.
Right. Now, but the, the agreement does have a payment schedule and talks about the terms of payment being net 30 days from the invoice, except, from the invoice date, except to the extent that the county credits amounts due to its contribution of up to one half of the Pacheco Stormwater District costs. And then there's a reference to the Stormwater District. So I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, so the county, obviously the county has been providing these services, right? And without an agreement and without any expectation that the, the district would pay the county back. any expectation that the, the district would pay the county back. They, once we sign this agreement, I mean, there's, there's nothing in the, you, because of my concern, you did add a lot of language about the, making a credit for the, our local cost share. Although there's nothing in here that, that says definitively the county will not expect the district to actually pay money. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. And that's not something I can address
Right, okay.
in the draft agreement, and something that the trustees need to address with the supervisors. And there is, and a, a draft of the agreement has also been put on tomorrow's agenda, not for action by the board, but as information about their authorizing me to continue work
Yes.
on behalf of the district as a retired annuitant. I don't, you know, know what, what decision they'll make, but this, this agreement for professional services is not personal to me.
Right.
They could, the county could provide legal services through another attorney in our office or through outside counsel. I, you know, that, that'll be up to them. But, and the, the professional services agreement that you're looking at tonight is, is really just the framework for, for the larger issue of the county having provided. But whether, whether or not the county is prepared to make a commitment today, or when this agreement is signed, that they're going to absorb the full cost of this and use it as a, provide it to the district as a contribution towards the local match requirement, is, again, I think something will, that'll have to be on the agenda of a future Board of Supervisors meeting. And if you were to, if the district were to approve it, it could be subject to such an agreement. And then you, as, on behalf of the district, you wouldn't sign it unless you got that agreement from the, from the county. So it's something that you could authorize, subject to that, that additional term, and, and then pursue that in dialogue with the supervisors.
Okay, so, so if we did that, if, if, would that have to be in writing as part of the agreement? Or would that be just in our resolution adopt or approving this? We would say?
It could be in the form of your motion
Yes.
to approve it, subject to an agreement from the county, not to expect payment.
Okay. That would, I would be more comfortable with that. I mean, we don't, we don't have much money anyway. I mean, we have a little bit of money in an account somewhere, right? But I, I still have a problem with signing this, knowing that, you know, we don't, we don't have the money to pay for these services. And I assume that if we don't sign this, then, then we won't be able to pursue using this as our share of cost with FEMA? They, they would probably require a formal agreement like this?
Yeah, and I'm not certain that this, this formal agreement will be sufficient.
Okay.
But it, but it's, it's attempt, an attempt to document the, the, the expenses that are being accrued for that purpose, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. So trustee Alfaro, did you, do you have any comments or questions about this?
Not right now. We have to think about this.
Okay.
Okay, I, I would also point out that this is a district obligation. It is not personal to any of the trustees, so.
Right, of course, yes. So this, we would not be personally liable for the, this money. Still, we could potentially be obligating the district, although we could, one suggestion that Joel had is that we could say, okay, we'll sign this, but only if the county agrees that they're not going to pursue payment directly from the district.
Well, we have to sign, we have to sign. See, we required it, we required it, continue.
Well, I think, I think we have to seriously consider signing it, because I think it will, it will definitely help us with FEMA. Is, does it need to be, does it need to be approved this evening? Since we don't, we, I mean, I know we have a quorum, but trustee Escona is not here. Will this delay things with FEMA if we, if we put this off for another month?
It's, it's really to set up a future situation, so there is time to, to consider this further at a future meeting. It's just be mindful of the fact that the board has only scheduled one meeting for, the Board of Supervisors is only scheduled one meeting for July. I, I suspect that we're several months away from having the, the local match issue come to fruition as far as FEMA is concerned. So it's, it's, we're anticipating that that's going to be necessary at some point, but it's not an immediate problem.
Okay. Steve, do you have any input on that in terms of your dealings with FEMA?
So, as Joel mentioned, yeah, we're just trying to build up credit for the Water District. And, you know, it's, it's a relatively small amount of money, even, you know, whether it's county projects or the Water District staff time, it's not a huge amount of money. So by, if you want to pause, say for a month till the board meets again at the end of July, it's not really gonna, you know, you're not going to be losing a huge sum of money, honestly. It's just, it's just our staff time, and, you know, we're spending a few hours a week. And so if you, if you want to pause and think about it, it's, it's not going to have a big effect on anything financially, if that's the question, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. Is there any public comment?
There are no public comment.
Okay, so trustee Alfaro, what would, what would you like to do? Would you like to wait? Would you like to move forward?
Let's go move forward.
Let's move forward? Okay. Would you like to, well, I guess I can make the motion, then maybe. So I move that we approve this professional services agreement between the Pacheco Stormwater District and the county, but only subject to the county agreeing to, how would I put this, to take on the cost of the actual services or not require direct payment from the district? Okay, so that is the motion. Is it seconded? Do you second that motion?
Yes, we can second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it, it passes with that caveat. So I guess I can go ahead and sign it this evening, and.
I would recommend that you communicate the substance of the motion to the Board of Supervisors, saying you reviewed the agreement.
Ah, okay, prior to signing it.
Right.
Okay.
Wait for their response.
Okay, I will do that. I will, I will communicate that in the form of an email, I guess. Well, I can talk to you about that after.
Right.
Okay, then let's move on. The next item is an update on the Pacheco Stormwater District Advisory Board. And since our last meeting, I received one application for our advisory board from Anthony Batello. So I, I can give that to whoever it is that I need to give that to. But is there anything that, what, what would be the next step then? I did, I've not received any other applications. But do we vote then on, on approving this? Anthony Batello as a member of our, our advisory board, or?
Yes, you don't, I don't know whether you determine how many members the advisory committee might have, but you can appoint them as they become available.
I don't think we ever came up with a number.
I guess the last time we talked about maybe three members?
Okay, yes. So trustee Alfaro said that we were talking about possibly three. So that sounds like a good number, since there are three of us. But since we've only, we only have one application at this point, I've been, I've been in contact with Grant Bryant's, but he has not submitted an application. So I'll have to follow up with him. So I guess.
Public comment?
Yes, public comment.
There are no public.
Oh, well, wait, there might be. Hold on.
There is one public comment.
Okay. And Judy, if you could please state your name for the record.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm just a resident on Lover's Lane. My name is Judy Barbosa. And I had a question that, out there where we live, we haven't heard that the applications were available. I mean, no one has talked about it. And I talk to my neighbors once in a while, but no one has said a word. They're not aware of this. And they should give, should be given the time, because I'm actually wondering how you're going to get ahold of people to find out what's actually going on out there, because they're still a little bit peeved, that things going so slow out there. I don't know why they're coming to me, because they should be going to you guys. But anyway, I'll bring this up on the next one about funds. But that, my question was now, is are you going to open that up so everybody can find out that these applications are available, in case they want to do that? And was there a boundary line for those to be eligible to do this?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There, no, there was no, so this is for the advisory board. This is separate from the actual board itself. So this is just a, a group of advisors. And those people need not be residents or of the district. They need not own property, although they might. That, that's not a requirement. And mainly, we were trying to solicit applications from people who might have some expertise or, or knowledge of the history of the levees that could aid us in making our decisions.
Again, a resident on Lover's Lane with my name, Judy. A question is, if we open it up to anyone that's, who wants to do this and may have the expertise, what is to, to prevent from stalling or having this big mix-up every time we have a meeting? Because somebody who lives outside of the area is not really knowing what's going on. And I don't know if the county is running on a hundred-year plan or a 150-year-old plan. And this needs to be told to thus, who us, or those who live out there, because that has a great effect on everybody out there. So if you're not aware of the 100-year plan, and if you are, you're the person that needs to live there and know what's happening, because you're going to be the person who, who knows, and you have the best advice.
Okay, thank you.
That's my view of someone who firsthand knowledge seems to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, and I, and I do appreciate your point about people not knowing what's going on, and we are, we are working on that, actually. As you mentioned, that is the next agenda item, actually, about the webpage. Is there further public comment on, on our current agenda item, the advisory board?
There is no further comments.
All right. Well, I mean, we, there's, we had thought maybe we'd have three, and we only have one application. So there's, there's still space if other people want to submit applications. I think that we can go ahead, since we do have this one application, we, we could go ahead and consider this one application. Am I right about that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then. So trustee Alfaro, we have one application. I can, I can show it to you, actually, although it's very brief. There's, there's not, not much to it. And actually, Mr. Batello is, is present at the meeting via Zoom, so if you have any questions for him, I'm assuming he's still, is he still on the? Oh, did he? Okay.
Yeah, like Ms. Judy, she said, we need people. They live in the area, you know, so they can have more knowledge about what's happening in that area.
Okay. Well, so, and maybe, okay, maybe we can have Mr. Batello next meeting, talk about, a little bit about his background, although I think he did that already. He is a past board of, he, he's been on, he was a past supervisor from the Board of Supervisors, and he owns property in the district. He doesn't live there, but he does farm there. No, that's Grant Bryant's. And I've, I've been talking to him also about joining, but he has not submitted an application. So, but I, I will continue to speak to him.
Okay.
So.
Yes, Anthony Batello was a member of the Board of Supervisors for at least three terms and perhaps four, so 12 or 16 years. So he's a, one of the partners in BNP Froot that owns a parcel that is west of San Felipe, but it spans, it cross, crosses over into Santa Clara County as well. So it's a, a large parcel on the north side of the creek. And they did have breaches in the past of the levy along that area. It is subject to an easement from former property owners granted to the district to construct and maintain levees, so. Well, he has some, for sure.
Yeah, like I said, you know, I'm new in the area, so I don't know so many of the people. It's why sometimes I say, you know, we need the people, they have experience, and they live in that area for a long time. I just lived in Lover's Lane for two years. So, because they have the knowledge, this is the people that we needed. Yeah, what we.
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, please. So.
Yeah, Jacinda, again, Jacinda Florrick, Lover's Lane. I just wanted to just comment on this. And I think Alfaro, Mr. Alfaro already kind of seems like he agrees to possibly Mr. Batello to, to be part of the advisory. But I don't, to respond to you, I don't think it's important that they live in the area, but if somebody who has experience in, in what we're trying to do. And so that's the major point of the advisory committee, is to get somebody in who is, can't. And so that's the major point of the advisory committee, is to get somebody in who is, can help us to establish or make a really strong, uh, storm district. So even going outside, maybe to the person that you're talking about, that already has a storm district, and inviting them to be your advisors, our advisors. I don't have expertise. I just have a little bit, kinda like, general knowledge and some, but no expertise. So I can't seem to be, I want to apply. But I do wanna push, you know, you guys to go maybe in that way. Because I think, um, these advisors, like Mr. Patel, and other people like Grant Bryans, somebody who has great knowledge in how to control the water districts, how to control flood areas, how to do that type of thing, or somebody even in the other Pacheco Storm District in their group, maybe want to come in, step in and advise us in how to do this district. And that would be my recommendation. We, they don't need to be living here. Because as you can probably see, we don't have very many people here, right? And people that, that are capable or feel capable that they can participate in an effective manner. So if we can invite those people and encourage them to be part, or apply as your advisors, our advisors, then I think that would be very good to do.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item?
There are no further public comments.
All right, well, then I would like to move that we approve Anthony Battello as the first member of the Pacheco Stormwater District Advisory Board. Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor, I opposed? All right then. So Anthony Battello is now a member of our advisory board. And, um, these applications, do I need to give them to anyone, or?
I would, uh, submit it, um, so that it's kept as part of the minutes.
Okay, I have an electronic version. I also have a, a hard copy that's not as easy to read. But how would you? Okay, then, then I will do that to Vic, to Victor, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, I will do that, thank you. Okay, then let's move on to, um, 2.6, update on Pacheco Stormwater District webpage. So, um, is there any staff report on this agenda item?
Good afternoon, trustees. Uh, my name is Victor. So, the update, uh, so the website can be, um, accessed, uh, by clicking on, it's accessed through our county website by hovering your mouse over the department section. And it's gonna, uh, the departments are gonna appear, and you're gonna see there the Pacheco Stormwater District. Uh, once you click on there, from the notes that I gathered, um, you, the district wanted a mission statement. Uh, and the mission statement reads as follows. So the mission of, the statement of the Pacheco, uh, Stormwater District is to address the recent flooding caused by the atmospheric river storm and prevent future floods in the area. The district aims to implement changes and repair the leavening to ensure the safety of the residents affected by the flooding on Lover's Lane. So the mission statement serves as a concise and clear statement of the purpose and goals of the, uh, district. It communicates the overall mission and direction of the district to stakeholders and the general public. The main purpose of a mission statement is to provide a guidance framework for the decision-making, strategic, strategic planning and resource allocation within the district. I also heard that the district, uh, wanted a history, uh, statement. So, uh, the history portion reads as follows. The Pacheco Stormwater District was formed in nineteen thirty-one under the enabling legislation of Water Code Section thirty-four-hundred to thirty-eight-hundred-five-oh-one. It operates as an independent district and is responsible for providing water supply for natural groundwater recharge through reservoir storage and release. The district reservoirs are specifically.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt here a bit. We're gonna need to edit this, uh, draft because right now it's referring to the Pacheco Pass Water District rather than the Pacheco Stormwater District. But those are changes that, that we can make. And, um, this, it does indicate the, what areas of content there will be, but we'll have to make some corrections along the way.
Okay.
So that's the map of the district here?
Yeah, but that's a map of the Pacheco Pass Water District, not the Pacheco Stormwater District. They're two separate entities. So we'll get it, we'll get it revised and get the right map up there and the right history and so on.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, wow, there we are.
There is, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm open to our new recommendations.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, I, we were supposed to, uh, supply content, and we, we, I didn't do that. So I, I appreciate your, um, moving forward on this. Trustee Alfaro, do you have any comments or questions about this?
No, no comments.
Okay, uh, so now we'll take public comment on this.
There are no public comments.
No public comments, really? Nobody wants to talk about this? Yeah. Okay, well, I, I have a comment. Uh, it actually, probably more like a plea. Um, so I wanted to, I, I would love to work on this webpage. But, uh, instead I've been, you know, dealing with insurance and special district and service agreements and, um, the like. And so I haven't had time to, to do this, which frankly, I think would be more fun, actually, than, than the other stuff. But, um, so I'm wondering whether, uh, I mean, we have an advisory board now. We're forming an advisory board. Would, would we, would it be appropriate to ask for volunteers to help with publicity? Publicizing the, the, um, the board and our, our work and helping in our outreach?
Absolutely. Uh, they wouldn't have to be advisory board members. They could just be, uh, members of the community who wanted to volunteer to help, uh, and.
I can, I think volunteering to help this young man, you know, to do something that's a bit vulgar and say, oh, I'd like to see this on that website, or I might, or I can't see it, you know? It's not that easy, maybe, why am I not getting to see it, you know? So, I can give you a contact and maybe I can work with you and, you know? But I, you know, I did notice that that map was incorrect, so, but I don't know, you know, but, you know, if I can be more technical.
Yeah, well, actually, what I had in mind was maybe one or two people who would be willing to, to, you know, also be sort of artissons on, in the neighborhood too. And, uh, and come up with some ideas for. Yeah, no, I, yeah, I know. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to her. I'll, I'll talk to her about it and see whether. Judy. Yeah, okay, well, maybe, um, so.
But I'd love to work with, um, what was her name?
Victor.
Victor. Okay, so it's, I mean, we can have conversations about this in the neighborhood, right? That's not part of the, as long as we're not making any decisions, that's not a violation of the Brown Act or anything, right? I mean, I can walk over to the, the Florrick's and talk to Lucinda about.
Absolutely, it's only, the only restriction is on conversations between trust, members of the trustees.
Ah, I got it, okay.
Not, uh, not with any other interested person.
Okay, so Paula and I have to be careful, and, and our mom don't, we can't, we have to be careful about the kinds of conversations we have and.
Right, all, essentially, the district business needs to be done at agendized, open, public district meetings, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, was there, is there any other public comment on this agenda item?
There are no further public comments.
Okay, then I think we can move on to 2.7, which is a discussion of potential revenue sources for the district.
Right, and I was in the process of preparing a, a memo, uh, to the board about how the Stormwater District Act calls for, uh, steps that the district would have to take to, um, obtain revenue. It is constrained by the fact that this was passed in nineteen oh-nine, and we've since have Proposition thirteen that has to do with limits property tax assessment. So what the act provides for is not directly available, except there is a, there are provisions regarding bonded indebtedness that the district could exercise. It would require putting a bond measure on the ballot and having an election by, um, the voters within the, the, uh, boundaries of the district. And, um, it would require a two-thirds vote approval. It is possible that that would be another source of revenue for a local fund match. When you got to that point, um, that you could go to the, the, the voters in the district and say, you know, we, we have ninety-four percent of all of the funding and, and, uh, and another three percent from the county or five percent from the county, and we just need to cover another one percent of what the total cost is. So, uh, and perhaps that, uh, you could incur bonded indebted, indebtedness to pay. Did you have a, um, a couple of issues that you wanna add to that, Steve?
I do, and I, I can do it from here. Thank you, Joel. So, um, as was previously mentioned, the, the optimal funding source, if FEMA grants it, would be that FEMA and state, FEMA and the state would partner. And the wire district, um, as was previously mentioned, would only be responsible for approximately six percent of the costs to, you know, perform work. The Army Corps has a program where they could potentially help out. Their local match is between twenty-five and thirty percent, as opposed to sixty percent. So, we'll wait and see how FEMA and the state, um, decides whether or not they're gonna provide reimbursement. But one thing I just wanted to mention, just a small item. The county, because the county has what they call a hazardous mitigation plan for the county, we've applied for a grant for the area to have a hydraulic study performed. Because really, you know, if we clean the debris piles, that would be great. If we clean up the breaches and, you know, clean up the creek in that area, that would be great as well. But over the past decades, there's just a lot of sediment and vegetation that's built up into the creek. And so, you, we need a broader plan. And so the county has applied for a grant to do a study of the area and the watershed, all the water that goes into the area to determine, you know, how deep does the creek really need to be? Talking to a few property owners out there, they said it used to be, you know, eight, ten, twelve feet deeper than it is today. And so, um, and when you go out there, I can, you know, I don't think they're exaggerating. So that's, you know, a big, um, factor in the flooding that's occurred over the years. And so, long story short, we're hoping, I, I don't know, you know, the, the odds if we're gonna get this hydraulic study grant, but we, we're trying to come up with a, a broader game plan to, to look at, you know, how we can address all the water that is coming from, you know, upstream. And so I just wanted to mention that for this item. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Do you know when you'll find out about the, the application?
Uh, Madison, my, Madison from OES, she's here. She actually applied for the grant, so thanks, um, Madison, if you could. I don't know the timings.
Hello, everyone. I am Madison Mitchell from San Benito County OES, which is the Office of Emergency Services. I've been working closely with Steve, uh, to support the district with their process with FEMA and also looking at potential funding opportunities to support. One of those is a grant. It's called the 404 mitigation grant, and it's through CalOES. Um, so it's specifically for projects to mitigate disasters. So ideally, this is a great project. Uh, the issue is it's very competitive right now, as you can imagine. Every county in the state applied for some type of assistance from the recent storms this year. So it's gonna be very competitive. So like Steve said, it, we can't say whether or not we'll, we'll get it. That being said, we've only done the first initial stage of the application. So that first stage is called our notice of interest, where we notify the state that we're interested in applying, where we give them a scope of work for the project, so the study that Steve mentioned. And then the state determines if it's eligible, and then determines if we can move forward with our actual application. So that project has been determined eligible. Our actual application, which will include a number of things, such as a threat assessment, um, additional studies and scopes. It's a very extensive application. That will be due in August. So likely find out by the end of the year, maybe late fall.
Great, thank you so much, Madison.
You're welcome.
Did you have any questions?
I will also state, it's not relevant to this application specifically, but because the district is identified as its own legal entity in the eyes of the state and the federal government, the district is eligible to apply for their own 404 hazard mitigation programs, or projects, rather. The only issue with that is, like Steve mentioned, one of the state requirements for application eligibility is an active and adopted hazard mitigation plan, which is approved by the state. Unfortunately, you guys do not have an active hazard mitigation plan. I believe you are able to, when the county updates our plan, you're able to support that process and potentially be covered under a county-wide plan. But our plan was just updated earlier this year. We're not looking at another update for another four years at this point. So my recommendation is, if you're interested in pursuing additional hazard mitigation funds in the future, would be to look at applying for that hazard mitigation, uh, funding opportunity specifically to create your plan. The only project that the district is eligible for, for right now with these hazard mitigation funds is a plan, uh, hazard mitigation plan. So you can submit a project only for hazard mitigation plan. But again, that cost share is kind of hefty. It's a twenty-five percent cost share. Your typical hazard mitigation plan, depending on what contractor you use or how you create it, will run you about a hundred, uh, probably eighty thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Just to put that information out there. Maybe a little even more, a little more even. Since typically the county looks at about a hundred thousand dollars per plan update. Um, and that's not creating a plan from scratch, that's a plan update. So potentially even more, just to give you some background details on that. But if you did choose to do that and you are awarded funds for a plan, you could create a hazard mitigation plan with the support of a consultant. And that, at that point, be eligible for additional hazard mitigation projects in the near future, should they become available.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I would report that there are other potential sources, like through the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which has, I think, provided the original funding for the, for the.
The levies.
For the levies, and then at several points in the past, either actually provided additional funding or offered additional funding. They were involved in a proposal for the repair of the 2017, but the, the 2017 flooding event and the levy breach then, but the district was inactive at the time, and so the county and the, the funding sources now and at that time also were looking for an operations and maintenance plan, and the counties didn't have the rights to, to provide that. That's why we have revived the district, because it does hold easements to construct and maintain the flood control facilities there. So, it is possible that's another source, and the other, there are other opportunities, I think, for looking at partnering with other flood control and water agencies in the, in the district, specifically Pacheco Pass, the San Benito Water District, and Valley Water, or Santa Clara Valley Water District.
Like Joel said, there's a number of grant opportunities available, and a lot of them don't have the same requirements that your state grants are going to have or your federal grants will have. So that's always another avenue you guys can look into if you're interested.
Okay, thank you. I have one, just one other question, so do we yet have any more information about the, the origin of the money that we do have in that account? I know you were going to talk to.
No.
Yeah, okay.
The auditor identified the funds, but the source and whether or not they're, it's an ongoing source is, is not known currently. Some may have been originated from the Santa Clara County portion of the district, and we're still looking into that. It may have been funds that have been in the account for a long time, that have simply accrued interest, and there's not a current revenue stream other than investment income.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this issue?
There is no public comment.
All right, then let's move on to 2.8, presentation on San Benito County Conservation Plan and Discussion of Specific Activities That the District Proposes to Be Done Within the Pacheco Creek. Okay.
Hi, good evening, my name's Ariel Goodspeed, I'm the Principal Planner with the County of San Benito, and I actually want to discuss a separate effort that's actually going on with the county and how it can relate back to this district and those involved. So we're going to kind of start, there's a lot of information, and so I apologize if I have a lot of questions, but let me try to hopefully break it down in a way that makes sense. So what is the San Benito County Conservation Plan, you know, the purpose and goals? Essentially, it's a joint habitat conservation plan and natural community conservation plan. It's to protect and preserve its valuable natural resources, including sensitive species and the habitats that support them, while also supporting the county's agricultural economy and future growth. So what is, what does this plan do that we're putting together? It basically develops and implements a regional approach to habitat conservation. It's a collaborative partnerships between landowners, tribes, conservation organizations, and many more. It's a programmatic process for mitigation of impacts, and it authorizes the use of incidental take permits for development and other projects that potentially affect sensitive species and their habitats. And I'll get a little bit more in, into that in the presentation on how that's applicable to this district. It provides local control to the county to implement a streamlined endangered species permitting process for activities to be described within the plan. So I kind of really try to make this clear, what the plan does and what it doesn't, because there's a lot of misconception that goes on. Basically, it preserves a large portion of the county's natural habitat and agricultural land. It protects listed species and their habitats with large interconnected reserve system, ensures compliance with federal and state endangered species acts. It reduces the regulatory timelines and costs. It provides standardized mitigation conservation for the proposed projects. What it does not do, it does not approve or deny any project, it does not replace or change the county's permitting or planning process, it does not add or reduce development permitting requirements, it does not weaken existing protection for listed species, it does not eliminate the need for federal and state endangered species act permits. It just provides local control to issue those permits. This is just kind of a brief overview of kind of the whole process. Generally speaking, we're kind of in the planned drafts, we're really doing our land cover mapping, I'm going to kind of get into covered activities, and, and all this information is on the website, I'll also show you where, where to find everything, and we can dig into it later. Our proposed plan area is the entire county. Our permit area is basically anywhere that we actually have local control. So, for example, Pinnacles, that's a federal park, we don't have control over it, so it can't be part of our permit area. So that's essentially around 769,000 acres we're looking at. Outreach plans, stakeholder lists, so stakeholders, any individual, group of individuals, organizations, political entity with a stake in the outcome of a decision, that's you guys. The target audience includes a wide range of organizations, agencies, members in public directly or indirectly impacted by or interested in the process. We have formed a public advisory committee, we meet quarterly, we have members that are on that committee, that, you know, come from a variety of different backgrounds, whether they're, you know, ag or development or conservation groups or tribes, or, I mean, we have a breadth of different kinds of stakeholders. If someone was interested in being a part, a more active role, or you could just listen into those meetings, and again, they're all posted on, on our website, and I can show you. So, an overview of covered activities, I'm going to talk a little bit about what it is, but I'm really going to kind of hone in on how it's applicable to this district. So covered activities, it's a list of projects or activities in which authorization will be provided by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for species addressed in the plan. So our plan, again, is a joint plan, so it's for both federally and state-listed species, because we have both in our county. It's to be eligible for incidental take authorization activities that must be otherwise lawful, not funded, authorized, or carried out by a federal agency, and must be under the direct control or authority of the permittee. So again, if it is a federal waterway, we don't have jurisdiction, and wouldn't be under this plan. It has to be that we have authority over the land. Some typical housing, commercial, new infrastructure, roads, pipelines, those could all be covered. Our kind of process for identifying covered activities, step one is, basically, we're identifying the potential covered activities. They include both specific projects and ongoing activities. Ongoing activities are where it really is going to tie into this district. There's a reasonable expectation that covered activity would occur within the permit term of the plan. Our plan can range anywhere from 30 to 75 years. So we're looking at approximately maybe a 50-year plan time range, so activities that will be going on, you know, within that timeframe. Enough is known to adequately describe the activity and the effect it would have on a covered species in the habitat in the area. So some of our screening criteria, controller authority, location, timing, impact, project definition, practic about, practic, thank you. Our third step is draft, review, and finalize the list and descriptions. It's an iterative process, it demands a high level of input and feedback from county staff, other familiar with activities, and must have enough information on all the covered activities to perform the impact analysis. So this is, again, I'll kind of like get into how this applies, and then also what I'm hoping to get from the district or just general members in the public that live in the Pacheco Stormwater area. So I'm just going to skim over other covered activities that don't apply to you guys, but urban projects in rural areas, general rural development, rural infrastructure development, rural operations and maintenance, and now the part that really, in-stream operations and maintenance, I'm sorry. So basically, activities or projects that occur or immediately adjacent to streams and adjacent to riparian vegetation that may result in impacts on a stream or canal, and may include activities at dams, reservoirs, and on-stream ponds. So, examples of in-stream operations, facility maintenance such as trail repair, trash removal, installation of fences, accumulated sediment removal, trail, road, and culvert repair replacement, and minor bridge repair, storm system maintenance, including clearing outlets to ensure unrestricted stormwater flow. Work may entail trimming vegetation and/or clearing sediment around drain outlets, storm damage repair, and flood prevention projects, including drainage improvements, natural resource protection, such as small bank stabilization projects, restoration to reduce erosion and removal of debris deposited during flooding, small-scale erosion control projects or storm damage prevention projects that do not create new permanent hardship on the creek bank or channel, including temporary flood fighting, activities that prevent storm damage, maintenance of flood protection facilities as armored creeks, bypass channels, levies, access roads, and detention ponds, operation of flood protection facilities such as detention ponds, bypass channels, and levies, fish screen installations or removal of fish barriers such as in-stream concrete low-flow crossings and culverts, vegetation management for exotic species removals, such as removal of giant reed and planting of native vegetation, vegetation management for public safety hazards, including fire management and mosquito control activities, stream gauge station maintenance upstream of reservoirs, stream maintenance for water supply and flood protection, including possible extension of existing regional wetland permits for stream maintenance, operation and maintenance of water utility, water supply facilities, including flashboard or inflatable dams, diversion structures, groundwater, recharge ponds, flow gauges, pipeline blow-offs, turnouts, drop structures, wears, fish ladders, it goes on. Construction or reconstruction of flood protection projects and maintenance of associated access roads along Pacheco Creek, Bajar River, and San Benito River. Implementation of groundwater sustainability agency projects and management actions to maintain groundwater sustainability. So essentially, we're in this stage of collecting detailed information of what ongoing activities would be occurring in places such as the Pacheco Creek, that we should look at covering for the term period. And it would essentially provide, by having those covered activities, we then, you know, look at, you know, the next step of, you know, habitat, and our listed species, so what species are listed, and, and basically, if those activities are covered, then the, then the county can issue take permits to those, you know, doing those activities. Categories of covered activities also includes conservation strategy implementation, implementing some of the mitigation actions that may result in low levels of take of the covered species that therefore require take authorization. A little bit about agricultural activities, as a lot of people within the district are farming and ranching, how does this like apply to you? So basically, all normal routine agricultural practices and on conservation easement lands and the reserves, so this is an example from Yolo, so you can see how it, there, these plans are all over the state, and actually, for the federally listed species habitat conservation plans are all over the country. It's a common practice, but basically, management activities to maintain suitable habitat conditions, activities associated with agricultural economic development. So, ag is a permitted use, unless something requires a discretionary action, you don't need a permit. You don't need a take permit. So, here's another one from Santa Clara County, take coverage for routine ag activities on lands within one mile of the reserve system boundaries, limited to a subset of covered activities. These are just examples. I talked about our public advisory committee meeting, our next meeting is until August 30th at 3:00. The county's contracted with ICF, and so myself with our consultants, you know, are working on this plan. The email is sbccp@cosb.us. I'm just going to click really quick. So, this is the website, it's under planning and land use, and everything you want to know about it is on here, and you can kind of go and, go and explore. But what I'm hoping to get out of this is basically to introduce some, a different effort that's actually going on with the county, and encourage those living in the district to schedule meetings with myself and my consulting team, to really describe the ongoing maintenance activities in Pacheco Creek that you're looking to have occur in the, you know, for the next 50 years. So it was just kind of an introduction, and I'd like a plea request to please, please get in touch with me, and, and let's talk further about how potentially we could look at covering these activities for you guys. So that is the end of my presentation. I think I, the only thing I had left was maybe questions? Public comment, yes.
Yes, well, let me see, trustee Alfaro, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
There is no public comment.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, so we are making our way through here. 2.9, Report on the Pacheco Stormwater District Easement Research.
Yes, I provided a copy of a, of a map that shows the parcels and the approximate location of the levies, and a number key that indicates. location of the levees and a number key that indicates the easements that apply to each one. I don't have it to display on the monitor or PowerPoint to display that, but basically, the entire length of the levee on both sides is covered by easements with two parcels exceptions that I'm still working on. One involves the Florics who are here tonight and were engaged in an ongoing dialogue to resolve that. Apparently, Mr. Floric's parents were provided with an easement form in 1985, and the legal description that accompanied it was not accurate. So it's unsigned and not recorded. And now that we can prepare an accurate legal description, we're in discussions about whether or not to pursue that. And then there's one other parcel that may be involved and will, I haven't heard from that property owner yet, and we'll follow up on that if, if. But fortunately, neither of those properties have any breaches or apparently have debris piles that need to be removed, so it's something we have time to work on.
Thank you.
Not, well, I mean, you would know. Well, is there debris on your? The issue is, yes, if, if you, if there's a breach or a debris pile on your property and you want the district to address it, then we need to know about it. Well, at some point, at some point, there needs to be a survey of the entire district. We haven't done that. And that would need to be coordinated through Steve's office. Yeah, we're kind of a little off the agenda in terms of not having these comments on the mic, but we'll.
Well, yeah, I mean, I haven't, yeah, I haven't, I haven't, I was going to call for the public comment on this agenda item if Joel was finished with his presentation.
I, I am, and I apologize for not having the graphics available, but it is in the agenda package and so it should be available online for those who can access it. If you, if there are people who would like copies of it, we can send them to them.
Yes, we'll call for public comment now on this agenda item, so if you would like to.
Hello, Lucinda Florck. Hi, Joel. My question to you would be, I know you mentioned us that weren't having, we don't have an easement contract yet with the Storm District, but as a follow-up question, what's the percentage of, or how many people do you need easement grants or something written? And how much, how many more do you need and who are they in, in order for them to, to, you know, to follow up and go through with what needs to be done? So are you like 50% there, 90% there? Do we only have two more people, like me and, you know, me and my husband? You're saying, oh, we're waiting on one person or we're waiting on one family? That would be the, kind of like the unknown for me to find out, maybe?
Well, again, and what's attached to the agenda item is a spreadsheet that lists all of the easements and the current property owners for those.
Oh, okay.
And.
So they, they have that information then? Who, who, who still needs to be?
Yes, we have that information. I don't, are you gonna, able to pull that up?
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I'm kind of like a broad picture kind of person.
Well, we've got the pictures as well.
Percentage-wise, we need 90, we have 10%, 90% of the people. We have easements, right? We just need two, three more people to sign up and that would be good.
There are only two, two parcels out of all of the ones that are adjacent to the, to the levees and the creek right away. And one is the Florck parcel and the other is also identified in the list.
I can give you, I have two copies of this, so I can give you the list and the map.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that'd be good. And then that's all I've kind of like, I'm just kind of interested in where, what kind of progress we've made. And then maybe we can find out when the next, when we plan to complete it, you know? Because like, we have a little bit of a problem. We don't know why it wasn't signed, why my parents didn't sign it or his parents didn't sign it. So we're kind of like, we don't know what it is, and so we want to investigate that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment on this issue?
There is no further public comment.
Trustee Alfaro, did you have any comments or questions? Okay. All right then, let's move to the final agenda item, and this has to do with the advice letter from the California Fair Political Practices Commission regarding conflicts of interest.
Yes, so I submitted a request for advice regarding the potential conflict of interest, and the advice letter, the primary benefit of the advice letter is that there is a specific exception for levee and flood control repairs. So that's what we're dealing with currently, and so there, it's an exception that would apply, and that if there are other types of projects, then, then the letter recommends that we submit, you know, a specific description of the project and seek advice on that. But since we don't have any at the current time, I think we're, we're okay for the time being.
Right.
Seven pages, it's very dense, it's difficult to read, even for lawyers.
Yeah, I did skim it.
But we did ask for the advice and we got a response that provides an exemption that, that's specific to the type of projects that we're dealing with. So even though two of the trustees have property that include portions of the levees and areas that might be repaired, it's not a conflict to pursue those, given this exemption.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this issue?
There are no public comments.
Trustee Alfaro, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions.
All right then. The final item is a discussion of future agenda items. Does anyone, Trustee Alfaro, do you have any specific agenda items that you would like on the next agenda? Thank you. Is there a public comment regarding future agenda items?
We have one public comment.
I am a resident on Lover's Lane. My name is Judy, and we discussed this at, I think, one of our first meetings when we got together about a neighborhood way of getting everybody informed in our neighborhood, what we're, you know, a suggestion on how to do it, because we're still getting a lot of people out there that don't know and they don't, they can't come to the meetings or you can't catch them. But when they have a question and you're outside, they'll stop by and, and talk to you about it, and half of the time I, I just listen because I don't have the right information, so I won't say anything. But anyway, this is a letter I got stuffed into my mailbox one day, and it's a neighborhood notice of neighborhood, all your friends in the neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood letter that says, you know, that if you want to sign up, and they'll put this out, I don't know how often, but it's through an email thing, and you can find out. Or if you prefer this paperwork, somebody's paying for all of this, I don't know, but one way of us to get in touch with our neighbors on Lover's Lane, because it's not working right now. I mean, a lot of them don't speak English either, so they get their word from whoever, and who knows if it's right, you know? You want right information if you're gonna give it out so no one gets mad, you know? So if you guys are interested, we can take the letter and take a look at it and develop something that works for you and your board. You don't want it? Okay. No, because you weren't living there at the time. Yeah. This is a newsletter that came out sometime.
I think we, when we talked about this a couple of months ago, we decided that it was an ad for Nextdoor app, wasn't it?
Yes, it was similar, yes. It's, it says, hi Lover's Lane neighbors. That's how they get your attention. So it's meant just for the people living on Lover's Lane and all, the whole street though, because the southern end of Lover's Lane, they're high and dry down, up there, and they don't really know or really care, because they're just saying, oh, those poor people, but that's all, you know? So, but the rest of us, and those south of the bridge, or north of the bridge, are worse off, you know?
Right, okay. Well, thank you for that comment.
Yeah, so if, if it's okay and anybody's interested, we could, you as chairman could get together and try something, and that's just the way. I think the county, in the very beginning, we had community meetings in 2017 on that flood. We had community meetings down there on the Sabatini Corner, and those, and we had a big group that night, and at the time, our district supervisor, sorry, all done.
I remember, thank you, thank you. I do remember, I do. Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding future agenda items?
There are no, there is one more public comment.
Okay, I'm Bill Florck. I live on Lover's Lane. Just another item, you know, Steve had mentioned about the creek rising up due to sediment buildup. The sediment buildup is also as the water goes out and it's going over the floodplain. And when I heard when I was kind of young that the slope, there's like a one-foot slope within about eight miles or something like that, I'm not sure, but if you look at the topography maps, there is very little slope out there. So I guess what I want to mention is that there, you know, just something that we need to address as well, is just that the floodplain itself, I don't know how that's gonna get fixed, but that's something that should be addressed, you know? There's, again, you know, probably gonna hit some nerves here, but there's some rogue people dropping dirt here and there. All that just, you know, in a flood condition, whatever, just flows out and just adds to the floodplain. So all that needs to be, needs to be addressed, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other public comment on this issue, on agenda item?
There is no further public comment.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to end the meeting? I second that motion. All those in favor? I opposed. All right, thank you for attending. This brings our meeting to a conclusion. Thank you. Our next meeting is the last Monday of July, so that would be, or no, I'm sorry, no, it's the fourth Monday, so that would be July 24th.
Yes, it's a Monday at 6:00.
Yes.